Cashiers and poison ivy are all good. I like mangoes so much, but you could get if I skin.
Oh, I've noticed that.
All right, it is four o'clock on May seventh, I will reconvene this regular Grand County Commission meeting. All present are the same as who were here at two o'clock night. Earlier. All rise for Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we will have our regular citizens to be heard session. If there's not as many people actually honestly, because I was expecting there to be, I think there's going to be a lot of people joining us on Zoom, but I will give everybody three minutes to talk. Raise your hand and you can come up and introduce yourself. If there is a plethora of comment, I will cut comment off at 5pm in order to get to our regular business. I also want to remind everybody to note that our conditional use permit decision tonight, the commission must make this decision as an administrative decision. And that review publicly may not will not be considered when this body makes this decision today. Thank you. I will start with calling people in the audience, gentlemen in the back, you had your hand raised earlier. Go ahead in the back. Yeah. Thank you.
My name is Dave Flosser and I live on five hundred West. A lot of people including myself have provided numerous reasons for why KCPD shouldn't build this wastewater plant or the development that would follow. But I haven't heard anyone ask if they can build it. Do they actually have the skills and experience needed to effectively manage to complete a project of this magnitude? Done some Google research into this and the short answer seems to be no. I haven't been able to find anything suggesting that the three KCPD partners have any real hands-on building and construction experience. I thought I might find something in the application. KCPD's attorney submitted with the Utah Public Service Commission on their behalf for the proposed wastewater treatment plan. Within the dialogue in this application, their attorney makes a statement, quote, "The applicant is a three-person board with relevant experience in the development and operation of sewage systems." But there's nothing included that actually backed up this statement. The full-page bio of each of the three developers was also suited as an attachment to this application. It's in these files where actual previous building and construction experience would seem most likely to show up. But as I found in my research, there's no referrals, no reference in any of the bios to previous building experience. Instead, the previous work experience appeared to be mostly finance, best investment, internet platforms, and bracing capital. The big undertaking, just building a subdivision of this size in a flat, ten more hospitable locations, where utilities are all supplied by municipality. But when you have to begin by building your own large wastewater treatment plant in a cage and need to create a water supply for up to fifteen hundred people, it becomes a much larger undertaking. And they add in installing all the buried infrastructure, probably trenching into solid sandstone places, floodplain issues, numerous sewage pump stations, and it's raised a whole new level of complexity. I suspect the three partners are very accomplished and successful in their areas of expertise. But based on my research, I do question whether they have the experience and expertise to effectively manage to complete this self-proclaimed $500 million project. And you all can't approve or deny affirmative based on the experience, but it does think of something maybe to keep in mind when you make your final decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Dave Wagner. I live up the street. I don't see how you can approve this because their water rights are being questioned and appealed by the BLM and by Intrepid Potash. My other comment. Give me a second. No problem. The width of the road? The right of way? Who's gonna, who's gonna build the road? Who's gonna maintain it? There's some serious questions that you need to consider. Also, you should have had in your packet a report from a man named Bob Phillips. He used to do mosquito abatement here, include pictures of that land flooded. And in 1983, we had a lot of water come down. It snowed a lot in March, it snowed a lot in April. And then in May, it got hot, which it sounds like it's going to do next weekend. When it stops freezing in the mountains, all that snow, including the stuff that fell yesterday, is going to come out pretty fast. You have an opportunity to see if ten feet is enough. I can tell you historically, it's not enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll take another comment in the chambers here. Just raise your hand if you're here to come. Yes, yes, ma'am.
My name's Amy Johnson. I'm local to Moab. I'm a geological engineer. I have concerns regarding the engineered compacted fill for this project. The reason I bring this up today is because the sewage pipes leading to the sewage plant will be installed in the fill. There is reason to believe that the compacted fill will be unstable. At first, the permissible maximum cobble size was three inches. But as the mining operation brought up larger and larger cobbles, the developer had his geological engineer change the permissible cobble size to ten inches. But the geological engineer admitted that the increase will result in sloping and instability and will likely cause problems with utility installation and repairs. In other words, an unstable fill. In addition, the groundwater historically upwells above the lower bench level. In, sorry, during regular increased river fills. So I'm not talking about when the river floods, I'm talking about just high river, river levels cause the groundwater to upwell to that level. This will saturated, saturate the compacted fill from below, resulting in even more instability in the fill. And I have sent scientific papers about how saturation in engineering fills can cause instability. I've sent those to a couple times to you guys. As the compressed fill fails, the sewage pipes will break, resulting in raw sewage flowing directly into the Colorado River through the permeable conductive fill. Folks, if the developer's paid geological engineer has issues with the compacted fill design and is throwing up red flags, maybe we should take notice. I mean, that's, that's the developer's paid engineer saying this. It only makes sense for this sewage plant to not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take someone else from the chambers here. Just Pete.
My name is Pete Gross. There are a host of reasons why this project makes no sense. It's foolhardy. But regardless, that's probably not your determination. But I'd like to point out, sorry to be repeated, the water rights are pretty dubious. There's a couple of pages of formal protests and it puts pretty heavy hitters like, as was mentioned, Intrepid Potash and the BLM. Another thing which I think is worth considering, and was also mentioned, the cost and upgrading of the road. Clearly, the current road is inadequate to handle the potential traffic increase, assuming if the project gets built. Utah State Law forty-one dash six eight dash seven oh six point five, motors may not pass within three feet of a moving bicycle. So three feet of moving bicycle, bicycle handlebars about two feet wide. At the minimum, they should probably put a five, they should pay for it too, and have to construct a five-foot wide bike lane on either side of the road. Okay, that's going to have ten feet to whatever they need just to handle what you would expect in normal traffic. It could cost awful lot if they could even acquire the easements in some of the places where you've got a cliff face right, almost right down to the existing road and a drop-off immediately on the other side. So there, that's another significant problem. Some of you know, I've been doing river jobs for, you know, almost a half century. I've seen like the high water of eighty-three, I've seen super low water. I've seen places like on the Salmon River where at certain water levels, you've got a big beach. And then other times, just certain seasons after a high water flow, there's no beach whatsoever. It's cobble and gravel. There's rivers at certain levels are depositional, certain levels are erosion. And also in the Grand Canyon, they've been doing experimental releases to try to rebuild beaches. Sometimes they end up actually eroding some of the beaches in that process. It's, it's definitely a learning day. The whole floodplain is obviously river deposit. It's, it could easily be rerouted to. And the other thing is, a couple of us have observed, even like twenty feet above the current existing road vertically, and some little alcoves in the rock, some river cobble. It's clearly, it's clearly river cobble. It's rounded. Anyway, like, I, you guys are in a tough position, but anyway, I just wanted to add that insight. And I hope also whatever conditions you might be able to put on it, then you make sure it's at least safe for bicyclists. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. I'm gonna go to Zoom. If you are on Zoom and you want to make comment, then please unmute or use that raise your hand symbol and I'll call you. Crystal, just raise your hand. You may, you may come online and speak, Crystal. Unmute your microphone.
Hello, my name's Crystal Music. I'm just gonna start with a little quote by Joni Mitchell. They paved paradise, put up a parking lot, the pink hotel, a boutique, and a swinging hotspot. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone? They paved paradise, put up a parking lot. I'm happy to speak against this proposal for the Kane Creek Development Project. First of all, there's some major, major issues that need to be addressed. And you must resolve those issues before you issue the permits. I definitely am in favor of denying the conditional use permit for the sewer plant. You must also consider the right of way. We have zoning concerns. Get to consider the whole development and its effect on the environment, the roads, the traffic, EMS, increased recreation use in that area, and least in, but not, I'm sorry, but most importantly, water. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Crystal. I'll stay on Zoom. Is there anyone else on Zoom who is here to make comment? On Zoom, are you here to make comment? If so, please unmute your microphone. Looks like not. So I'll go back to the chambers. Just raise your hand in the chambers. Yeah, in the back.
I just wanted to say real quickly, first, if it is the developer's position that you guys have to grant the conditional use permit, and there is no room for the exercise of the discretion by the commission here, which I think many would disagree with, I would say make them prove it. They're acting as though it is, you know, refusal of the conditional use permit and the next stop is multimillion dollar lawsuit. That's not how it works. They have to appeal first. And so, so yeah, make them, make them prove it to an appeal officer. The second part is that it really concerns me as a larger strategic matter, that again, they have been, it concerns him too, that they have been threatening lawsuits pretty actively. And the basis for the threat is how much money they've spent so far and the permits they've got so far to encourage them to spend that money, or to justify them in spending that money. So long as we keep granting early permits without resolving the huge raft of major issues that this, you have heard about extensively in other parts, then it just allows them to continue to rack up big bills and then a bigger bill even to threaten the commission with later, if a later permit process doesn't go how they want. So that concerns me about the early process and the pattern that is being established.
Thank you. I'll keep it in the chambers right now. Please raise your hand if you would like to come forward and speak. Yes, sir, in the back, please.
Hey, I'm John, and my grandpa was a previous owner.
I'm sorry, what is your last name, John?
Walter.
Thank you.
My grandpa was a previous owner of that land. And I've heard some things going around from the developers that my family used land and did mass irrigation on the land. That is not true. I grew up there, worked on that land all this entire life. And the water is primarily used for the residents and camping. And also the flooding, still a major issue. I'm not sure how they're going to solve that because every single year, my family would have to ship down the campground, certain timeframes of the year to prevent people from camping in flooded areas. And also the honesty of these developers. Seeing what went down with my family and how continuously I see them throw my family under the bus to justify what they're doing, I think it is horrific. Seeing how they purchased land to begin with. My aunts and uncles were completely like, my family was completely kind of cut out. And I just find it very strange to trust someone that would need with an elderly man privately to sell his land for a fraction of what it was worth. And seeing what my family went through at that time was really difficult and really hard. And I'm very much against this development. And I don't think the developers were very honest.
Thank, thank you, John. I'll keep it open in the chambers. Who else is here to make comment this afternoon? All right, well, do last call on Zoom. Anyone else? I can't see everybody who's on Zoom. Quinn, maybe you can. Okay. All right. I'll do, I'll do one last call here in the chambers to come forward. If you're here to make a comment, please raise your hand and then we'll proceed to our regular feeding. Yes, ma'am.
Sonia Jeffries. I've lived here for twenty-four years, but been here all my life, off and on through the summer. Moonflower, Kings Springs is very special. It's like a national park, beauty, river rafting, whatever you have, you know. It's a getaway. Quick getaway, just a getaway. And you feel like you're far from the town just being back there. It's very special. We've already sold out most of Moab. I don't think we should sell out anymore. Another thing is water. Have you asked anybody downriver in other states what they think of this also? What if it does break? What if sewer does go into the river? We already have a water problem. Especially with the river. Not flowing all the way to California anymore. We want to put sewer into it? I don't think it's very smart. And also, I feel that they did like to us in the beginning, saying that was natural preservation, conservation. Hey, I thought it was all good. Now I think it's a lot of malarkey. They got us from behind. And I don't think it's very right. And we should not let our place go like this. We should not. We've already let so much go that all of us appreciate, respect, and have taken care of. And I really don't think that they have the right to do this. They're not gonna live there. They're not gonna be around. They're gonna put high-dollar homes. We can't even afford to live here in law as it is. It's very frustrating. It's one of my favorite places. My kids. I think we should keep her sacred instead of ruining something else that's very beautiful. Along with the history of all the petroglyphs from this end of the rim all the way to the canyon lands needles. It's all along that wall, both sides, the top, all over. Now we have no trespassing, can't even see the petroglyphs now. More vandalism is gonna happen. It already seems like a city out there. The road seems like a city in the middle of the summer. All that dry camp, they're taking trailers, everything out that way. I don't even like going back there during the summer anymore. It's a city. And we want to add this to it? I really don't think we should. I don't think we should allow it. Yeah, I'm very hurt by it. And I don't want to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Another round of the chambers. Yeah, Barb.
Barb Cross. I live on seventy-two hundred Ridge Drive. Everything the last lady just said. I'm just sick over this. I'm sick. I think the river belongs to everybody. We can't just have the rich people owning a section of the river so the rest of the people never get to see the river. The river should be for everyone. We just can't let this happen. We can never go back. If this goes through, we can never go back to the way it was. And we should keep our canyons, our beautiful canyon. And I'm also, the other thing I'm concerned about, and I did send you an email about the HOA running a sewer treatment plant. Did you guys remember getting that? Yeah. And like I said, I don't think an HOA is responsible enough to run a sewage treatment plant along the Colorado River. Just because half the people in an HOA won't even live here full-time, it'll be probably less than half live here full-time. And to have somebody on there knowledgeable enough to run, you know, to be responsible for a sewage treatment plant is not what people in that high-end housing would want to do, I don't think. Guess that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Barb. Keeping it open here in the chambers. Anyone else like to make comment before? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
I'm Courtney. I've lived here on and off for four years.
What's your last name, Courtney?
Barry. I recently bought a place here and was just looking forward to this being my home. And this, I think, has just made everyone so sick. Sorry, public scoping is my biggest fear. But as awful as this is, this is the most together I've seen this community of granolas versus rednecks in like years. I think everyone I've talked to agrees that this is just not right. It's like absolutely devastating. The road is too small. The floods will happen. It's all just inevitable. And it's like, why make another Aspen? It's already ruined a beautiful town. Like, I've seen families leave that town for the same reason and come here. And it's like, we're just gonna ruin everything. And it's just so sad because babies aren't gonna get what we got. And it's just like, we all deserve nature and like enjoying the outdoors. So I really hope you guys just, I know, I don't know what it's like to be in your positions right now, but like, the world, the whole community is just begging for a chance to put an end to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment from the chambers? Anyone else here to make comment? Go one last round on, anyone else who's joined on Zoom other than Sheriff? Okay. All right, I'm gonna go to last call in the chambers, then we'll get going. If you're here to make comment, until six o'clock, it's your last opportunity. Okay, thank you. We will now, we have no presentations, department reports, or agency reports today. So we'll get on to our general reports, and we always start that with commission member disclosures. Does anyone on the commission have anything that they need to or would care to disclose concerning today's agenda? Looks like not. So we'll get on to our general commission reports and future considerations. And I will start with our vice chair.
I'm sorry, I'm pulling up a calendar. So since the last meeting, one thing I did was attend a cooperator's meeting for the Dolaris Travel Management Plan at the BLM. They expect the public scoping period to open May twenty-second. That's the kind of thing that the commission would typically write a letter on. So that will be coming up on our agenda. Anyone, I there, I have a set of slides. Some of you already have it, but if anyone else is interested to see them. That's great. The range of alternatives, which became an issue in a previous, and the labyrinth thing, you know, seems, seems much improved to me. So as far as I can tell, things are proceeding just fine there. And of course, you know, they, as we know, these NEPA things are multi-step processes. Now they're just developing alternatives, and they have a couple of rounds of public comment. So we're relatively early in the process. I don't see anything else in my calendar, so.
Thanks, Kevin. Evan.
The end of the month is always kind of quiet for me. I did want to mention that if anyone's following, the, the May meeting of the EMS Board is being postponed. And that's because the State Bureau is representing some of our team members north. And so a lot of the group will be attending those ceremonies, May twenty-first. They were recognized for the incident of the year award. And it was for the plane crash last fall. They were the first on scene and a very impactful call for sure. And everyone involved did great. So besides that, I think I just, you know, had a couple of meetings that were attended by other commissioners in preparation for today's meeting. So I will keep it short and leave it at that.
Thanks, Evan. Bill?
I was participating in the Motorized Trail Committee. The thing that really came out of there, my interest everybody is that hopefully there's a state trails, it's located here now, that's available. I'm working on both motorized and motorized trails.
No, I'm sorry, microphone.
Thank you. So if anybody missed that, we have a state trails.
And they're the ones that are, they're using the facility. Those two, those, no, that's different.
They passed, or they were going through negotiations and it fell through. So I don't know where they actually ended up as far as their, their location. They didn't mention. I also participated in a meeting with UDOT and it was the SR one twenty-eight study. It was a technical advisory. It was a technical advisory group and focus was on improving safety and improving the use on the river road by different user groups. Out of that meeting then prompted a second one that I have started with, uh, Mr. Bear, Jared Bear from UDOT and, uh, there's a group put together in an email group right now and we're working on the Aggie Boulevard project. So there's some movement on that and so we'll see how that one goes. Also in a meeting with the Southern Advisory Council, Colorado River Authority. Um, we had a presentation by the Colorado River Authority and our plan moving forward when our order. Changes from the lower upper basins, we better redo that contact. So that one, let's see, it's in public lands meeting at UAC. It was in UAC board meeting as well. They go, the National Association of Counties has started a public lands knowledge hub that's available to everybody now and that's, um, you can get into different, um, chat groups as well as pull information out of their hub on different land issues. Let's see, I did some open training in St. George last week. And then also related training, we went through some social media issues that our youth are facing. Um, that was put on by the Iowa being what's going on. They, they said ninety-five percent of our youth are on their phones, on social media. And there was also a meeting on postal services that the state's working on with both Steve Hunter and William Dieterhauser. Previous Senator, I believe. Yeah. Okay. And then the only other thing is that meetings in preparation for today's.
Thanks, Bill. Trish.
Okay, um, I had a planning commission meeting. We had a fairly robust discussion about an amendment to employee housing as far as within commercial zoning because currently commercially zoned properties are allowed five RV sites. And so it was an interesting discussion. Um, I had an, a meeting with Shippo regarding the archaeological sites out, um, within Haynes Canyon. So just kind of interesting. We had an chat meeting with, um, John Corkery from Thompson, just kind of looking at, you know, what, what does Thompson really need as far as economic development and possible grants and of course water was, was one of the things that came up. Um, and then last night I had a meeting with mosquito abatement. They have found a biologist with great, which is great. He has housing. Um. They actually, one of the employees got their pilot's license for drones because they can actually apply, um, pesticides with drones, which is kind of interesting. So some of those areas within, for example, Matson that are really hard to access. And then lastly, the storms or this cold weather has really slowed down like larva production as far as mosquitoes. Um, the last thing I want to say is for some reason, all of my public citizen input has been going to spam for the last like three weeks. So I found that out yesterday. I was looking for somebody's email. They're like, did you give my email? They sent a text to me and I found it in my spam. So I just want to say if I have not been responding to you, hopefully I've remedied that. I have no idea what, what was, what was going on, but I have all your emails.
Alright, thanks, Trish. Uh, Mike.
Uh, I, all I had was a meeting April thirtieth with the Canyonland National History Association, CNHA. Uh, went to the meeting roughly four P M. It was actually a lot faster than expected. Uh, there was a couple, there was a couple action items, uh, that they granted a little bit of money, uh, additional aid requests to both national parks and, uh, Forest Service. Uh, both that totaled roughly forty thousand dollars, uh, in aid, in additional aid requests, uh. And the partner comments from that meeting, National Park, uh, National Parks is one of their partners. Uh, CNHA actually facilitated a lot of their tribal meetings, uh, that were held soundless. Uh. They actually paid for, um, there was a disconnect because they could, uh, some of the tribal members couldn't actually up and partake in the meetings, uh, directly themselves. And, uh, it was, CNHA was more, uh, pass through or help, uh, to get those tribal members up to the meetings to actually have a session. Uh, the BLM, uh, is another, uh, partner with CNHA. They, it looks like, uh, reiterated, uh, both in their MOAB field office and their Monticello field office, uh, the need for housing. They'll, uh, uh, CNHA actually, uh, provides partner housing in, in the Moab Valley area and they're actually asking, uh, BLM's actually asking for uh, partnership housing in Monticello. Uh, and BLM says that it has become a game changer in the hiring process to actually offer housing women here, uh, because we all know how much the struggle is on that. Uh, Forest Service, uh, again, um, their main, uh, their main, uh, report from it is everyone, uh, is to know that we'll start seeing a lot more cows wearing colors. Uh, that is actually on most of the ranchers. That's not, that's not the government putting colors on cows. Uh, it is, uh, technology actually, I mean, we, we can track things with it. Uh, ranchers would like to know where their cows at. Yeah, electronic fences, uh, geo fencing, uh, zoning. And so we see a lot more, uh, ranch cattle with colors on them. But, uh, that was the report. Uh. That's rough, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, uh, I want to begin with recognizing one of our commissioners. Tricia Dean received her PhD. And so I guess we can proudly say we have a doctor on board. So congratulations. I know that was a huge amount, huge amount of uh. Uh, we had an, uh, we took a tour of the Iranian mail tailings removal action pro- uh, uh, project on, uh, the twenty-third. It was amazing, uh, but to remember my first, uh, tour of it, uh, eight years ago, nine years ago now, and where you couldn't, if you were on the other side of a pile, you couldn't see the highway. It's so large. So it was very exciting to see the progress and how close they are coming to an end. Uh, they're on schedule to remove another billion tons this year. Uh, I asked about our plans. They should be back here pretty soon. So if they move another billion tons, we'd be down to one million tons. Uh, they're looking at, uh, how they're going to cover the Cisco sales. And, uh, just the maintaining of the water and how long they will probably through legacy management, be monitoring the water if they have full time after the completion of, of all the tailings. And after the tailings are removed, it will still take some time before the, uh, land can be, uh, developed. Uh, I went to, on the twenty-fourth, I went to an economic development meeting. Ashley Holmblatt, uh, gave a presentation called optimizing the MOAB product mix. And it was to ensure that the products offerings meet customer needs to effectively communicate with customers through marketing to set customer expectations and inspire desired reaction. Uh, there are two types of people who visit our, uh, uh, community. Uh, one, we would call our sightseers, people come to go to our national parks and sightseeing and we have our adventurers. And they are very different types of tourists. And, uh, we were just talking about how to best reach both in, in various ways so that, uh, because what's going to appeal to an adventurer is not going to appeal to sightseer. And so it become very strategic in how we, uh, advertise. It was an incredible presentation, very interesting. Uh, then we also had a presentation from the MOAB childcare. In the last two years, they have increased the availability of affordable high care uh, in Grand County by fifty percent, over fifty percent. Just this month, they opened a new center for preschool age children at the community church of MOAB. This is the third state licensed center we've helped open. They've helped open. Total capacity of these two sen- this, these centers is sixty-three children. In addition, they have provided subsidized staffing support to many existing childcare providers to ensure they continue their operation. Uh, they are excited to announce they have formed a partnership with Grand County School District. One of the largest employers to help them recruit and retain staff at their schools. I'm starting September first, two thousand and twenty-four. School staff in need of childcare will get three hundred dollars a month deposited into their dependent care flexibility savings account to use to help offset childcare expenses. And half will come from the district and half will come from MOAB childcare. So that's very exciting, uh. But, oh. No. There is a very lively discussion on offering childcare to visitors and how if we could do that, the possibilities of ha- of having that bring in revenue. It was, you know, it, it was a really good discussion that if we could figure out a way to offer that and, and that, and in those situations you can charge what the cost is and more that that might be able to help offset, you know, the cost of, uh, childcare. It's a very good discussion to be continued. And uh, and then they started discussing this year's rural grant programs ahead of the game. On the same day, I still had a meeting with, uh, Solidways Special Service District. We interviewed Mike Danaway to, uh, replace one of our members who resigned. And Solidways continues to work towards implementing a new, uh, softwares to improve customer service and, uh, county. And they, several members attended a conference. Uh, and they are still looking at ways to, um, have services to discount for the Grand County towns. They, they was discussed. But, I think, you know, it's still in the process. Hopefully soon I'll be able to report what's going to happen. Uh, I attended the MOAB Area Housing Asso- Association, uh. There is, uh, we are applying for housing for neurologically divergent housing. Uh, there, that means anybody that's dealing with some type of neurological issues from being on the autism spectrum to, uh, hyperactivity to different types of neurological issues which impair and make it harder for them to get into housing. There is that type of housing in, but it's only in the Los Angeles front. If we're able to move forward, we will be the first rural county to offer such housing. So fingers crossed. Uh, Green River opened in affordable housing. They had a, a grant opening called Channel Commons. So we were happy for them. They closed on Skyline Apartments. The townhouse has been approved by the planning department. For everyone's knowledge, right now there's a very short list for the two-bedroom houses in Virginia. So if somebody kind of, you know, is in a lower income bracket, they kind of, um, they should look into that. Community rebuild has six applicants. Uh, twenty percent of this is interesting. Twenty percent of self-help houses offered by the federal government.
What's that percentage?
Twenty percent. We're doing a lot of self-help. So, and then there was a lot of discussion on the issues around walnut leaf, how that happens. The cities, uh, they're trying, you know, doing what they can. They're, they're offering people financial help. They're working brand releases. They're helping people pay. So. Sad deal. Uh, I have met with Four Corners Behavioral Health at Royal Crossing, uh, Four Corners Behavioral Health, like all so many places in in our county have a hard time keeping staff because they can't house them. And so they want to see if there's some way to buy a house that Four Corners Behavioral Health can buy a house at a Royal Crossing or rent some apartments to, to have their staff. So that's not part of the policy right now. So, you know, they're looking at maybe doing some tweaking because that's not just, uh, Four Corners Behavioral Health that is facing that issue that they can't keep employees. And they can't afford to buy, they looked at buying the land that's for sale just south of their campus. And it's just no way an agency of that nature could afford it. So this was our thoughts to go forward. Uh, uh. Oh, for future considerations, we got that email about the list of checks, checklist for all the public meetings. I would just like to follow up with that staff to make sure that we my report.
Thanks, Mary. Busy. Um, I, uh, along with a couple of other commissioners, I met with, um, with Steve Waldrup, who is the governor's housing, the housing czar. Along with Mary and Bill were on that initial meeting with him and then, uh, I was, uh, had the good fortune to along with Mary, take him on a bike tour of some of the, uh, affordable housing projects in the county, which ended up at the Arroyo Crossing groundbreaking ceremony, uh, which I think Trish attended as well. Um, and that was, that was great. I, I can't say enough about, about Steve Waldrup. I think he's, he's a, he's very intelligent, very, um, very driven to, to really help out with the housing situation in the, in the state. And I think the governor made a great choice when he picked Steve and, and he said he's very interested in our county and would, would make further trips down here. So that's positive. Um, I also attended the Earth Day Tour of the Ultra Site that Mary referenced earlier. Um, on the twenty-fourth, I wanna, I'm on the museum boards. I want to give the museum huge kudos for putting on their awesome annual gala. Um, I also want to thank, I, I was one of four commissioners there and we didn't sit at the same table or, or put our heads together at all, but, but it was a, it was a great event, very well attended. Um, super impressed with the museum, excellent speaker as well and, uh, preliminary, um, uh, reports look like it was also a successful fundraiser for the museum. So, uh, that was awesome. Thanks, uh, Bill, Trish and Mary also for attending that. Uh, I attended a e-bike subcommittee meeting, um, put on by our, uh, Motorized Trail Committee Chair, where we have a small group where we talk about e-bikes and kind of looking at, at the future of e-biking in the county. Uh, most of that, there's a BLM representative there too. So we uh, spent most of that time actually talking about the BLM exemption that they, they, uh, will offer to people if, if needed so that they may, uh, e-bike legally. Um, and that's a, that's a national BLM-wide program and, and, uh, um, it sounds like it, uh, has been successful. Um. I also attended a, oh, actually I helped guide. I put on my guide hat, but, but for the county more or less, a, it was the minority mountain biking. There's a national club in town with about forty, uh, minority mountain bikers from various parts of the country and our economic development department kind of helped out with, uh, a couple of guided rides for that group, which was pretty cool. So I was able to, um, volunteer for one of those and met some really neat people from all over the country. And, uh, there's a couple of businesses that helped out with that, that volunteered time and, and other things, uh, Big Horn Mountain Biking, uh, uh, Huncha Letter Shuttle Company and, and Western Spirit Cycling all, all contributed to that. So thanks for those businesses. It was a really cool event. And, um, I also popped by OSTA on Angie's invitation to see, they had, it's a year anniversary of our stage uh, purchase over there. So they had to do the yearly maintenance. So I went over there and, and they opened up the stage and were maintaining it. I got to see that process and, uh, I just want to say again that that is just a, a huge boon to our community that, that we have that stage and, and, uh, it's, it's really, uh, really cool to see that. Uh, part of that is, is a future consideration that there is only one person who is certified to, um, to operate the stage and that is, uh, Greg Poor, who's the assistant director out at OSTA. And I think it would be uh, beneficial in the future if we could have some training and, and it's not inexpensive, but to, um, to get another couple of people maybe trained up to be able to operate that. Um, and then Um, and then there's one more future consideration I have. Um, uh, at the next meeting, I'd like to have a discussion about, uh, we're, we're actually online to have. Uh, quite a few more miles of non-motorized bike paths, um, including, uh, the gap on one-twenty-eight. Uh, Spanish Valley Drive Bike Path eventually and even more immediately. Um, talking about a two-and-a-half mile continuation of the bike path up to Utah Raptor State Park. Um, uh, Dan brought this to my attention is that with that funding, there's also the question of, uh, who is going to maintain that? And it looks like, uh, you know, the county is currently maintaining the bike path on one-twenty-eight of the canyon. Uh, but they're probably pretty close to their capacity for that. So, um, I think it would be a great idea to talk about, um, how we can help facilitate, uh, that. Or, or how much appetite we have for, for doing so and helping those non-motorized paths come online. That, uh, covers it. Um, and that's it for me at this point. So we will move on to our elected official reports. And I see, uh, the sheriff has joined us on Zoom. Um, Sheriff Wiggins, or do you have a report for us today?
Yeah, I do. If you can, uh, sure, let me share my screen.
Great. Okay, you should be good, uh, Jameson.
Let me know if you can see that.
We can see it, yes.
Okay, so just these are the April monthly stats. Um, things are starting to pick up for us. Obviously, it's our busy time of the year. We had twenty-eight hundred calls in the dispatch. Six hundred and fourteen nine-one-one calls. The deputies responded to eight hundred and fifty-nine calls for service. Two hundred and ninety-eight traffic stops, twenty-six arrests, hundred and four papers served and eighteen search and rescue calls. And the other photo that I've got here today to show you is our new deputy Joshua Christensen. He comes from Roosevelt Police Department. He and his family relocated. Um, he's an experienced police officer and we're excited to have him. And I think he's there in the chambers with you today.
He is, yeah, welcome.
And that's all I've got.
Great. Thank you, Jameson. Um, I'll move on to our clerk, uh, uh, gate. Nothing right now. Thank you. Thanks. And Stephen, our county attorney.
During the last break between commission meetings, I attended the Utah Prosecution Council Spring Conference. Uh, they provide an update on legislative updates, changes to the criminal code. Stuff was enjoyable. Had the opportunity to meet this week with commissioners. And with the help of another attorney that's been helping us out, I'd like to thank him for his ability to meet with us. And thank commissioners for their scheduling, uh, letting us meet and getting that on short notice. So that's been very helpful. Uh, I'm sad to announce that, uh, the deputy county attorney Eddie Cervantes has taken a job with. I believe it's Salt Lake County, so he'll be leaving us next week. Uh, so if you guys know an attorney that, uh, we're going to be hiring again. But I think it's going to be great for Eddie. He's looking for more exciting cases and I wish him the, the best on his, his next adventures.
We're not exciting enough. We're good here in Grand County.
Perhaps there is, there's a more, I guess, uh, if people really want to do a lot of prosecution, right? You know, gain cases, all sides, although those are scary and dreadful, uh, that is, it is interesting to prosecute those cases.
Well, in that case, I'm glad we don't have, uh, enough interesting stuff.
That's right, that's right. Uh, also I need to get, uh, up with you folks about HOPEMA training. There's been a few changes in the legislation. It's eased up, uh, meetings for, for some of the definitions of meetings such as emailing. Uh, so long as an outcome isn't predetermined, then we can ease up on some restrictions on emails. So doing a presentation on that in the short future.
Thank you, Stephen. Uh, all right, we're on to our commission administration report, our administrator report. Uh, Mallory.
I, I sent you all, uh, a report from the past few months. Uh, and so what I can do is make sure the next packet that there is, there is also that. I would keep a look at that, like to see the staff, some of our larger projects. Uh, but Evan, he mentioned something that reminded me. Uh, I actually found out that with the Office of Emergency Medical Services. They're met with the Utah Department of Health Services, uh, members of the Canyonland. Canyonland Airport ARF team, uh, which would be like their air fire response of, of fire. Um, are being recognized in a ceremony on May twenty-first. Obviously, they have a commission meeting, so can't be up there to support them. But, uh, they are being honored for their exceptional performance, uh, related to, uh. Aircraft, aircraft crash on October first, so.
Yeah. Thanks, Mallory. Uh, Quinn, anything else? All right. Um, that concludes our general report section. So we'll move on to our general business action items, discussion and consideration of. And we have, uh, the main event, Tita first. So, um. Kane Springs Improvement District Conditional Use Permit for a Majority Utility. And I will welcome, uh, Alisa Martin and Dan Stenta from our, our Planning and Zoning Director and County Engineer. Uh, first, um, to present and, uh, take questions.
One more second, sorry, a little delay. Okay. Last time we presented the staff report, it was, um, somewhat brief. I didn't really go into the findings as much. We did have, um, a few updates to the staff report as well, so this time around. So I wanted to actually kind of get into the, the findings a little bit more this time around, but I'll give a little background, um, on the application itself. So, application is being made by the Kane Springs Improvement District for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a major utility. Specifically, a wastewater treatment plant and water storage tank. These facilities are proposed to be located on three existing parcels on the east side of King Creek Road, so, Zone Highway Commercial. The wastewater treatment plant will straddle two parcels and the water storage tank will be located on a separate parcel. A major utility use in highway commercial zoning requires a conditional use permit in accordance with Land Use Code Section three point one, the use table. Technical review of both the public drinking water systems and the wastewater treatment plant, um, fall under the purview of Utah Division of Drinking Water. And Utah Division of Water Quality respectively. Both agencies are responsible for approving final construction and operation permits of these facilities. The staff report pr- provides several findings related to the CUP application, beginning with the particulars of the application, which are pretty straightforward. Basically just providing the background of the application submission itself, the legal status of the applicant. And the requirement for CUP, um, for a major utility in that zone, uh, per Land Use Code Section three point one. The second set of findings pertain to consistency with the general plan. This section is standard in all of our staff reports. Um, across all application types, based on Article One of the Land Use Code, which says. That the Land Use Code is intended to implement the county general plan. So as standard practice, we consider, um, every development proposal through the lens of whether it aligns with the current general plan. Uh, just to per- kind of provide kind of the context there. Furthermore, in Article Nine Administration and Procedures, most applications require consistency with the general plan, including conditional use permits. And in the staff report, this is relevant to finding number fifteen, which is addresses CUP criterion E. Consistency with the general plan is also a requirement in Utah State Code, specifically when it comes to public utilities. So the first finding, um, in this, uh, set of findings for the consistency with the general plan. In the staff report, references Utah Code Section seventeen twenty-seven A four zero six. Which states that no public utility, whether publicly or privately owned, may be constructed or authorized until and unless. It conforms to the current general plan. Being that the application was deemed complete in December twenty-two, twenty-three, we are looking at the general plan as adopted in the year twenty-twenty-two. There has been a more recent version of the general plan adopted in twenty-twenty-four, so I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, that was an amendment for the purpose of adding a dedicated housing chapter and adopting the Moab Area Affordable Housing Plan as an appendix. But no changes were made to the land use chapter at that time, except for some, um, minor adjustments to the section numbers. Um, however, the land use chapter is, as you know, currently undergoing a major comprehensive update and is planned to be adopted in the fall of this year. With the help of a consultant team brought on to help planning staff, uh, bring this important effort over the finish line. In looking at the twenty-thirty general plan, adopted in twenty-twenty-two, Section six point two urban service area. We found multiple inconsistencies, inconsistencies with the development of a major utility in the proposed location. The most direct finding pertains to Section six point two, uh, Roman numeral three. Which gives the directive to not extend community water and or sanitary, sanitary sewer services. Outside the urban service area, service level one, unless consistent with an adopted urban growth strategy. Or for public safety reasons, as determined by the Planning Commission and the County Commission. That section defines service level one as the area currently serviced by municipal water. Sewer and paved and gridded roads, including all utilities, gas, power, cable and fiber. The King Creek Parcels are outside of this service area and the county has not adopted an urban growth strategy to expand the urban service area. The staff report goes on to contemplate Land Use Code Section six point five Commercial Use, which describes the highway commercial future land use designation. Being located along major arterial roads. And the King Creek Parcels are located on King Creek Road, which is currently classified in the Unified Transportation Master Plan as a major collector. This finding is a bit complicated though, um, as the twenty-thirty general plan references the twenty-twelve Future Land Use Map. Which does identify the King Creek Parcels as having the highway mixed-use future land use designation. Um, which is the older, uh, category of highway commercial, I guess, um, land use designation. That was, uh, described in the twenty-twelve general plan. Staff's understanding is that the twenty-twelve Future Land Use Map was used in the twenty-thirty general plan as a placeholder. While the update to the Future Land Use Plan was being worked on. Finally, um, we thought it was, should be noted in the findings that both future land use scenario maps used in recent workshops. And land use steering committee meetings dedicated to updating the future land use plan. Designate the King Creek Parcels as range and resource. Following the general plan relating, related findings, the staff report provides detailed findings and recommendation, recommended conditions. If approving, based on the conditional use criteria A through F in the Land Use Code. Detrimental effects on the environment from a major utility in the proposed location were identified, including impacts on the view shed. Um, nuisance from traffic of service personnel's, uh, safety hazards related to potential for major failure of the facilities. And possible health, safety and welfare impacts due to the potential abandonment of the facilities. Staff found that these reasonably anticipated detrimental effects can be mitigated. Those mitigation measures are included as conditions of approval one through four. Staff did not identify any unmitigated detrimental effects on compatible, compatibility with the surrounding area. Though we did provide conditions of approval to ensure the facilities blend in with the surrounding natural landscape. In terms of criterion C, external impacts on the proposed use can be mitigated by locating the wastewater treatment plant inside a sealed cave. With carbon filler, filter odor scrubbers installed on the air exchange systems, properly disposing of biosolids. Continued conformance with Land Use Code six point twelve Operational Performance Standards. And, um, the Southeast Utah Health Department Regulations, as well as continued compliance with the Utah. Department of Environmental Quality Wastewater Discharge Permit Requirements. Staff identified detrimental impacts related to criterion D infrastructure, including possible impact on law enforcement and emergency services. Those impacts can be mitigated by installation of a se- uh, fire suppression system. And finally, criterion E, consistency with the Land Use Code and the general plan. We provide a balanced analysis of the proposed use in terms of aligning with the purpose of the Land Use Code. For Section one point five, and then to address the general plan conditional use criteria. We refer back to the findings stated early in the staff report. Those are numbers six through nine. The final criterion F, parcel, parcel size, staff determined that while the surrounding area is currently undeveloped. And the underlying zoning does not have a minimum lot size, the layout of future lots in the vicinity of the major utility uses can be accomplished in a manner. That will provide for adequate mitigation of impacts. That's all I have for the summary of the staff report. Um, do you have any questions about that? I can answer them.
Thank you, Alisa. Try to, um, yeah, I'll open it up for questions to Alisa at this time and then we'll, uh, let, uh, Dan speak.
Um, so just really, toward the beginning of your presentation, you talked about six-two Roman numeral three, but I think it's actually Roman numeral eight that you read. Just wanted to.
Is that what states the staff report? Oh, okay. That was a, yep, that was a typo on my part. Sorry about that. You were right. It's Roman numeral eight. Thank you.
Hard to get anything past Kevin. Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I, I get, you know, we, we talked about this at the, at the previous meeting, um. Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I guess I don't have any additional question, questions for staff, uh, beyond what we talked about last time.
I definitely appreciate you delving into this, but your department, Alisa, it's, it's super helpful.
Also, that, I mean, I think that was a very efficient, um, summary, yeah, so.
Oh, thanks.
Not all staff knows how to keep things concise, so you should, you should give lessons to some of your colleagues.
Oh, we, we're, yes, I'm passing that on for sure.
Oh, um, Dan, did you have anything that you wanted to add to the staff report?
Not really. Um, I think we talked about all the findings that I, I kind of analyzed. Um, regarding most of the criteria except for the general plan compliance issues and those conditions. Um, one of the issues that was raised by Commissioner Walker at the last meeting was, um. Most of the joint, well, all the adjoining property to this, these private parcels here is public lands. Um, and I hadn't really analyzed impacts on public lands, uh, in discussions with our own county attorney and, and some. Consulting attorney that he provided, we kind of talked through that a little bit. His take on it was if there was, you know, a well-used trail or some kind of significant feature that, you know, was going to be impacted significantly. Um, that we might want to analyze impacts to that, but if it was, we were just talking about like the road going by it. Or the lands, you know, sort of above it, accessible above it, but not necessarily where we're routing people. That he didn't think that that was really appropriate. So on that note, I didn't add any analysis to that effect. But if you have any other technical questions that you've encountered, um, with comments that you've received or. Help understanding of, to my, what I understand about the water rights issue, uh, I could certainly answer questions to those as well.
Actually, um, so that reminds me, I guess I do, do have one question. Um, you know, over, you know, several months, we've received quite a few comments. About, about flood hazards in this area and some of them specific to, you know, utilities. I, I think even at the beginning of this meeting, my, I, I admit, I don't. It, it seems like the regulation of these utilities is, you know, spread between different entities, like, you know, we're preserving a conditional use permit. But I think like the detailed engineering is, I think, the responsibility of the state agency. If, if you can, could, could you just give a review of like, you know, who's in charge of checking, you know, which parts of? I, and, and I guess in particular, I'm thinking that for the conditional use permit, that's not really something we would delve into in detail or.
So I could, I could, I could tell you the process that goes from here. So they, they've been given a. The letter of a. The letter of approval and concept, I think is what it's called, is that from, from divisional water quality. So divisional water quality is a division under. The State Department of Environmental Quality. Divisional water quality is a division that regulates. Waste onsite wastewater systems, septic systems, those types of things, also sewer treatment plants. And sewer collection systems, injection wells, all sorts of things. So. They have, there's quite, there's quite a big section in the state administrative rules about all the criteria for. Plant technology, specifics, redundancy, extra capacity. All sorts of things. There's, there's another whole section that deals with the collection system and pumping stations. And so they do that review, the state divisional water quality has a guarantee. That does, does that review of the detailed plans. My understanding is that. They have been, the plants have, the detailed plant plans have been submitted and are currently under review, first review with them. So the next step would be that they would get an approval permit. And approval to start construction, basically. Your design meets all of our criteria. We've, we've looked at it all and your specs and stuff are on par with our regulations. Can go ahead and construct. At that point, they would also have to come to us for a building permit. And that would look at some of the issues pertaining to fire protection. Would be primarily the one that the building permit be looking at because mostly it's mechanical kind of gear. And then after that, the state divisional water quality does their inspections. Quality assurance inspections with that and they issue an operating permit. Once it's been, they, they kind of do some test runs on the plant, put everything into commission, make sure it's all working. They issue an operating permit. They will be required, this is a relatively high. High-tech knowledge type plant. They will be required to have a level four certified operator at all times in their employ. To run it, which is the highest level of certified operators for wastewater treatment plants. I believe the plan currently is to contract with GISA to do that. There was a letter in the file. Of, of GISA. Expressing their. Commitment to do that for them. There's a possibility that if GISA is unwilling or they don't have the qualified staff to do it, they would need to. Go out and get a qualified operator from. Other firm or have staff certified or something, but to get a level four certification, it's not trivial. It's not something. Just go and take a test to get it requires actually working on a plan for periods of time under. Supervision and doing that kind of stuff. So, so those are regulated by the state. And then they would get an operating permit to go into thing. There's also the discharge permit, which is regulated by. Department of Environmental Quality. Because that's actually an ETA permit. It's relegated down to the state level, but it's, it's called a national permit. For pollution discharge elimination system. So it's the same permit that any kind of large. Any, any kind of wastewater treatment, anything that's discharging the waters of the US, basically. Has to get that kind of permit, whether you're commercially used, industrial use. Wastewater treatment, whatever. So, so that's regulated by the Department of Environmental Quality. That requires weekly. Depends on what flow they're passing through plant, but typically weekly testing. And monthly reports and then they have like a three-month moving average to account for some seasonal variations. In the river flow and also the activity of the. The plan itself tends to slow down cooler temperatures, although this plan is not. Most wastewater treatment plants tend to have to slow down in winter. So, so those would be reports that would be regulated by that agency. They would receive those, they would review those, they would. Certified compliance for those. I think that's it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
Trish. Question, it's just a comment. So just, just so we're. Understand, GISA does not run a wastewater treatment plant, their water service provider is not. And I'm not saying maybe they do have a level four operator within their agency, but that is not what they do.
That's correct. They currently do not operate wastewater treatment plant. They do want to get a level four operator. That was one of their. Motivations for wanting to do this because they'd like to get. I pretty soon to have one of those, but yes, they did not. That's okay.
Extremely technical question here. You said with conditions on a fire protection system. There will be a fire. There will be a question of prior prevention.
So we won't, we won't process a building permit in C O until they have. You know, they, they don't, there's currently no fire hydrants out in that location. So that'd be the first order of business, is they have their water system developed so that they have. Fire suppression water, fire hydrants within the required distance for the type of use that it's being there. I believe that there's also will be internally in the cave will be automated.
I was gonna say, yes. Automated notification.
Right, yes.
Expectations of way to be notified in event.
Yeah, that, one of the conditions of approval in the very beginning of the staff report is to. Have some ability for communications. Network or whatever to be installed at that site in order to have contact with emergency services.
And wastewater treatment plants are not necessarily a high fire hazard, because mostly that's, but they do produce gases that can be explosive. So there's usually requirements on all the electronics or electrical stuff all has to be explosion proof. Kind of parameters there. That's the biggest hazard is the gas.
All right, any other questions for Dan or Alyssa? If, if we're finished with questions for them, then I, then I'd excuse them and invite the representative from the improvement district. Or it's all the audio, just a last round for, for these guys. Anyone have anything? Thank you guys so much, very much appreciated. And I'll invite Mr. Barrett, who is the attorney for the Kane Springs Improvement District. For words to me.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, members of the public. My name is Bruce Barrett. I'm counsel for the project. Before I. Give my relatively brief presentation, may I suggest that it makes. May make more sense to postpone my presentation until after the six o'clock public comment, so that I don't need to. Try to rebut, to come to ask you for due process rights, to rebut some of the things that might be said in the second session. I believe I'm entitled to respond. My guess is that almost everything is going to be the same as I've already heard and I'm ready to respond to them, but. It seems to be more efficient to do it that way. I, I'm, I'll do it either way. I'm just trying to be.
Me, my guess is, and I'm just, this is just off the cuff, is that we would have this item wrapped up before the six o'clock.
That's great. If, if, if that's the case, then, then that's fine.
Yeah, generally I don't do a system to be heard until the current business is completed.
That's, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. I, I was just trying to be helpful. Thank you very much. That solves that problem. Because I don't intend to be long. First, I want to express my appreciation that Alyssa is feeling better. I was worried that we might have put her into a problem the last time with the. Bright lights and the stress, but I'm glad she's feeling better. I want to thank the staff again for their hard work and by that I mean. Your legal staff as well as your, I understand you have outside counsel as well. Mr. Stocks explained to me who your outside counsel is and I appreciate that. I will tell you the same thing I told Mr. Stocks and to my clients. And that is, Mr. Coons is a fine lawyer and a wonderful person. He and I have been on the same side of cases. And on opposite side of cases. I'm happy to disagree with him sometimes, but he's a very smart and a very good lawyer. If he tells you you can turn this down, he's wrong, but he's still a very nice guy. Let me address just a few points. First, I want to talk about the new findings regarding four oh six and the consistency with the general plan. I respectfully disagree with the staff report on finding six, seven, eight and nine. General plans are always vague and ambiguous mostly. Occasionally, I'll talk about the few times that they're actually specific in just a second. But generically, general plans are hopes, dreams, wishes and visions. And hopes, dreams, wishes and visions are not sufficient to deny a conditional use permit for inconsistency. As you know, under state law, if there's any ambiguity or inconsistency, those ambiguities and inconsistencies. Have to be construed in favor of the private property rights of the applicant. And we believe that we've demonstrated there's enough consistency here that we are indeed consistent. To the extent that there's an attempt to put in, as I think Mr. Walker noted, some of the. Specifics in the staff report specifically six point two, et cetera. What that appears to me to be is a, to manifest a sort of backdoor. Attempt to downzone the property by different means. If that's the case, where they are targeted essentially at this approved, this, this plant here. Then I would suggest that that constitutes part of a regulatory takings operation and that's not acceptable. I, I would also point out that to the best of my knowledge, the C U P for that we're here talking about now. Never came up during the original year or so, year plus of the review of the application for the subdivision. Thus, I'm more inclined to believe that it's a deliberate attempt to target that other project. I also want to talk just a second because there seems to be. A misunderstanding of my role and the applicant's role here. I've read a whole bunch of online comments that I'm somehow a horrible rotten person and bullying people. And the developers are trying to bully and threaten people. The developers are trying to develop their private property under the laws of this, of this product, of this county. Under the laws of the state and they're going about it through the process of this county. I was asked a specific question about potential liability and I responded to the potential question. I was also asked some specific questions and needed to discuss the issues of. Compliance with the general, with, with the various aspects of the potential reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. And I addressed those. We addressed potential obligations, ways to mitigate those issues. That's how conditional use permits work in the state of Utah. That's a due process right of my clients. I understand some people may have taken offense at it, may have taken umbrage at my tone. I don't know how. I thought it was very respectful. To the extent that I was not respectful to you, I apologized. I don't believe that's the case. I hope you don't think so. I was trying to play it straight down the middle and explain to you the goods and the bads and what I believe the law is. And I hope and I trust, although I don't know what Mr. Coons may have told you, I would be shocked knowing how often I've worked with Mr. Coons. And I'm not long with Mr. Stocks. I would be surprised if their legal analysis was materially different in any way from my legal. Analysis of the standards of how you consider a conditional use permit. Without having been said, let me talk about just some of the criteria. I've already talked about the general consistency with the general plan, why we disagree with that. Criterion F, it's part of finding fourteen, it specifically addresses the purposes of the land use code. The problem with that analysis is there is a specific Utah Supreme Court case directly on point. It says you don't look at the purpose statute of a code, you look at what the code says. That case is called Price Development. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact citation, but it'll only take a few seconds to find it. And there's an ombudsman's opinion in a case called Pleasant View. I can't remember the ombudsman's opinion number, but I remember it because it was my case. And the reason it went to the ombudsman is because the planning commission in that case did something silly. And turned something down based off of the purpose of the statute. The city itself. Asked for it ombudsman's opinion precisely to tell us to save the city council from making the same mistake. So I would hope that you would take a look at Price Development and the Pleasant View case. So now we're going to talk about the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects and I, I want to say that I, I tried to group them. Into one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I think, and. I'm going to ignore the statements of the seventh one was the testimony of the disgruntled relative of the seller. I'm, I'm just not going to respond to those defamatory allegations at any time. The next issue was the, the river belongs to everyone and this is going to be environmental ruin. Well, the river doesn't belong to everyone. The river belongs to the United States of America. The private property or surrounding it belongs to the private property owners. And if the private property, if the city or the state or the county wants to do something about that, there's easy answers to do it. You can pay market value for it as places like Park City and Southern County do all the time. They've done that a number of times. It would be a large amount of money or very large amount of money. But private, the river doesn't belong to any, to the public, neither do the banks of the river. In terms of the operational competence of the operations of the facilities. I don't need to address that one because your staff did an excellent job of addressing that just a minute ago. Regarding water rights, it was fairly clearly stated at the last hearing, the water rights are simply not your issue. It is an issue, the water rights will exist, they have to be addressed at the appropriate forum and that is not your issue. And I don't need to rehash that issue. Regarding the compaction of the soils. I'm not going to address the specific misquotations from the various staff reports and the speculation about what might happen. I will simply say, it's very simple. My clients in installing the sewer lines intend to be safe, will be safe. Will be subject to the jurisdiction of any regulatory body to ensure that they are safe. I have faith, as opposed to some people apparently don't, in the ability of the reviewing authorities. To determine whether the compaction is being done right, whether the design is done right. I can't count the number of times I've shown up in front of local governments where the competency of government staff is attacked. And every time I have to stand up and say, you know what? I trust your staff to do a good job. I trust the experts to do a good job. The same thing applies with the flooding of the river. That's a scientific ex, excuse me, scientific expertise. And we have adequately demonstrated beyond any paranoid speculation. That what we're doing complies and we have to do that to comply with federal and state regulations. We have to. Get out of the flood plain. There's no question about it and there's no question that we're doing it right, no matter what someone else might speculate. Regarding the, the traffic slash road condition, this is going to go back to. A fundamental issue that we discussed at the last meeting. That is really simple. Under the conditional use permit laws of the state of Utah, you are entitled to evaluate the reasonably anticipated. Detrimental effects of the proposed use. The proposed use here is a water treatment plant and a sewer treatment plant. And your staff has analyzed all conditions reasonably related to those actual plants. Those actual things that are before you. You are not entitled to, in my opinion, I believe the law will pull, see, see me out on this. You are not entitled to consider the supplemental effects, the secondary effects of. The project that might be facilitated by this conditional use permit. That's an issue that we may wind up fighting about. I'm convinced that we're right about that. And if we have to appeal, we will appeal, but I would hope that you wouldn't. Shirk your duty to approve an approvable project and just say, well. We'll let the appellate authorities fix it. We'll let the courts fix it. That's not right. That would, in my opinion, be. An fairly obvious element of public clamor, because you've heard a lot of public clamor. I know, Mr. Chairman, you. Tried to say you weren't basing it on it, but as elected officials, elected officials should never be handling an administrative appeal like this. The fact that you are. Unequivocally exposes you to the risk of wearing two hats. You are elected officials. You. Are sympathetic to your voters. I know your law sets you as the administrative body on that. That is a terrible mistake. And every competent city and county in the state is trying to correct that. And legislation is trying to correct that, for example, on things like subdivisions now, which you don't have those kinds of authorities because it's an administrative decision. You cannot unring the bell from the fact that all of your constituents. all of your constituents that vote for you have shown up and said they hate this project and you need to vote against it. That's not your job to listen to what they don't like, what they don't appreciate, what their hopes and their wishes and their dreams are. Your job is to narrowly evaluate this project. This project based on the standards of the Utah conditional use permit and not kowtow to public interest, to public clamor. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I don't. I hope you don't.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll open up the floor to, to questions for Mr. Barrett.
I may, I, I may actually get home, but a decent hour.
Looks like you got your hopes and dreams.
Thank you, Mr. Clapper. I would be happy to get home before midnight like last time. Thank you.
All right, um, we will uh, get to our uh, commission discussions on this. Anyone care to open it up?
Kevin? Um, sure. Um, so I I, I think Mr. Barrett close, closed was talking about, you know, public clamor and this is administrative um, decision and, and I, I think we all understand and recognize that. And um, and I think this, at least that, you know, the grounds on which I'm inclined to make the decision are you know, surprisingly, you know, simple and straightforward. So I, I don't. And it's not a, a subject that we've gotten a lot of, of a lot of public clamor, clamor on. Um, and I think main, you know, there's been a lot of talk about conditions and things like that, but I think there are a couple of threshold issues that um, make it difficult for, for me to justify approving this. And you know, one is, they were touched on in the staff report. One is um, section four oh, you know, four oh six of, of LUMA and the other is the um, you know, nine ten five E from our own code. Um, and, and both of those enjoy compatibility with the general plan. So, um, I, I, I wasn't, I mean, I can, you know, at some point in the discussion, we should go into those in a little bit more detail, but I I, I did want to say that those are, I think it is possible to um, just focus on those narrowly. It's not, you know, I, I don't, you know, feel like my opinion about, you know, whether, you know, this proposal is compatible with this section of our general plan. You know, it, it seems like a pretty simple call to me. That's not likely to be changed by um, public input. Um, yeah, so uh, so at, at some point, I, there's a question for the county attorney if, if we have, you know, findings beyond the ones that are in the packet that we want to attach a motion, we should read them out, out loud.
Yes, it should be written into the record.
Okay, so pause. Make a motion when, yes, Mary.
Yeah. Say, um, the statement was made that uh, we should not shirk our duty. I want to state that I would never shirk my duty. I've taken this incredibly seriously. I've studied, have listened to our lawyers, have uh, read code and such, which is very difficult and have stretched my capabilities. And uh, any decision I make will be made on a fine. I've heard the public clamor, I've read the emails. I, I have people stop me on the street and I can sympathize, sympathize a lot. But in this case, I cannot use the fact that majority, like someone said earlier, I think the closure, the almost closure of Woody Tab, Woody Stavner was the last time our community has come together. And it's come together when uh, Ms. Torres comes to talk at a public here, uh, as she did last time. Is a good demonstration that this is across the board. People across the board are concerned and do not like this project. And I would like to work, I mentioned it at the first meeting. I would like to work with the developers to come up with a project that is palatable. That is public land, that is private land. They have the right to develop it. But it would be, it would be maybe it's their right to develop it, but is it right to develop it in the manner in which they're considering? Uh, but beside the point, I just wanted to mention that I've heard I will not shirk my duty and my decision will be made on the fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Kevin?
Yeah, so I, I guess I'll go ahead and make the motion and say discussion for afterwards. Um, so I, I moved to deny the conditional use permit um, and make the following findings. Um, there's two parts, but they're each long. You know, one, the proposed C U P is not consistent with UCA seventeen twenty seven A four oh six. And seventeen twenty seven A four oh six reads quoting, you know, after the legislative body has adopted a general plan, no street park or other way, ground place or space, and no publicly owned building or structure, no public utility for their publicly or privately owned. May be constructed or authorized until and unless it conforms to the current general plan. End of the quote. Um, B, the part of Grand County's current general plan adopted in twenty two, which most directly addresses the new water, addresses new water and sanitary sewer services is six to eight, which reads, do not extend community water and or sanitary sewer services outside of the urban service area, service level one, unless consistent with an adopted urban growth strategy or for public safety reasons as determined by the planning commission and the county commission. C, um, the location of the proposed new utilities lies outside the service level one area. D, um, Grand County has not adopted an urban growth strategy that includes this area, includes the area at issue. And neither the county commission nor the planning commission have determined that the proposed new, new utilities are necessary for public safety reasons. E, um, the proposed public utility therefore does not conform to the current general plan. F, um, we also, I also adopt staff report findings numbers six and seven together with these associated evidence items. Um, and then finding number two, um, the proposed C U P is also inconsistent with the general plan. A, um, Grand County Land Use Code nine ten five E reads, the proposed use will be consistent with the purpose of this, purposes of this L U C, the general plan and any other statutes, ordinances or policies that may be applicable and will support rather than interfere with the uses otherwise permitted in the zone which is located. Um, B, the proposed C U P is not consistent with the general plan and the policies contained therein for the same reasons it does not conform to UCA seventeen twenty seven A four oh six. And C, there is no clear, no clear way to substantially mitigate these detrimental effects. And the applicant has made no proposal for mitigation. So.
Thank you.
Sorry to read such long term. Stephen made me do it.
There was a motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the table, Commissioner Walker and a second for Commissioner Hadeen. Um, discussion.
Yeah, so I, I guess I get to go first since I made the motion. Um, I, I do, do think that, um, this is, you know, it's, it's sometimes challenging for, I think all parties involved, you know, to, um, you know, to separate this narrow conditional use permit from the, you know, the larger context. Um, and so I, I think all the discussion about, you know, much of the things that people care about and that um, both proponents and opponents have, have talked about, you know, is, is irrelevant. Um, this section four oh six of LUMA, it basically, you know, doesn't give us much choice. If we think that the um, proposed public utility is not consistent with the general plan, then we have to turn it down, even if we think it would be a good idea. Um, it's noteworthy to me that the staff reported the last meeting, their, their conclusion was that it was not consistent with the general plan or not conformed to the general plan. And that was written when they maybe didn't realize, you know, that, that that would be a crucial issue. I think that section four oh six hadn't come to their intention. So to, to me that, you know, that, that somehow increases the credibility of that. You know, they were thinking it was a low stakes issue. Turned out maybe it was a high stakes one. Um, and I agree with uh, much of what the staff report made. I mean, I, I don't want to re- repeat, you know, the kind of formal language I made in the findings, but if you look through the general plan, and I've done a bunch of it lately. You know, there are a few sections that talk very specifically about utilities and this six to eight, you know, says, don't extend them outside of certain areas unless you do the sort of growth strategy planning first. Um, I, you know, that by itself, you know, this isn't visionary language or, you know, goosey goosey language. That, that is very, very clear. It's unusually clear for the general plan. Um, I think the only way that, you know, there would be somehow enough ambiguity in the general plan that you know, it might not be clear that this is prohibited is if there were other parts of the general plan which contradicted that, but I, I certainly haven't found, found them and I don't, um, none of the comment letters we've gotten, including the letter from Mr. Baird. I mean, turn them up. There, there are some sections that talk about highway commercial zoning, but we, we're not talking, you know, that would be relevant if we were talking about the entire project being consistent with the general plan. We're just talking about utilities. And so I don't really see how sections, you know, saying that highway commercial uses are okay in certain places, that, that doesn't um, contradict the six to eight because six to eight doesn't prohibit the utilities. It just says you have to plan for them. If you're going to do them, you can't approve them until the, the plan has, has been adopted. Um, so I, I don't see any inconsistency there and between those two sections of the general plan. And therefore I don't think there's any ambiguity in the general plan, plan on that question. Um, then one last point and I will temporarily shut up. Um, you know, our section nine ten five E is of our land use code now, not, not general plan. Land use code is very similar in that it, you know, calls for consistency with the general plan as well as other policies, et cetera. I, I think there's been some confusion about this, this purposes of thing that occurs there. But the way I read that is that is, is consistent with the purposes of the land use code and general plan, not the purposes of the general plan, just the general plan and any other statutes, ordinances or policies. And the, the reason I think purposes of is only applying to the L U C and not the other things in the list is it, it just doesn't make sense to apply it to the full list. You know, if we have a, a policy, it's not going to have a purposes section. Um, ditto for, you know, ordinances or statutes and things like that. So I, I think the, the way I, I read that is, this is just calling for things to be consistent with the general plan. It's worth noting that LUMA does allow counties to, you know, usually a general plan is, um, is an advisory document, but um, you know, state statutes, LUMA allow us to um, make the general plan, you know, not, not, not merely advisory, but you know, has to be obeyed. And this, I read this section as doing that for conditional uses within our land use code. So, thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. Any more comment? Discussion?
I would just echo some of what was said that, um, you know, in some of these discussions, it almost sounded like it was a judiciary decision even, like that we had to rain some sort of judgment, but um, it's not legislative. It's not judiciary. You know, I could say personally, I uh, enjoyed the old campground. I'd often recommend folks staying there. And so, um, I've got no problem with, uh, you know, these projects on private property personally, but regardless of all that, um, it is a administrative decision. And, um, with that, you know, the staff findings and their report, um, especially six, seven and eight really rings strongly. And I think that it's, um, not something that we can uh, approve because of it not conforming with the general plan. And so, I uh, I see it as a very black and white reading as it's written.
Thanks, Evan. Any further comment for a call for a vote?
Yep, sure. You know, we've, um, been so many meetings over this situation for, seems like months, but it's probably less than that. And so out of my notes, I put together a statement that I'd like to read. You know, I commend Mr. Walker and think that he's an extremely smart individual. See the fact he's probably smarter than I am, but you have the developer who has looked for outside help in this matter. We've got the county here, have our own county attorney, and we've also hired outside counsel. And all of those people come up with a different opinion. And so it, it is a struggle that we find ourselves in this place. Many people are not happy with this issue, but this is based down to some property rights that some people have to develop out there. And this is going to be a battle, it sounds like, moving forward. But at the last commission meeting, our professional staff and our county attorney advised the commission that we did not have sufficient reason to deny the King Creek conditional use permit. Commissioners voted to table the decision until we could obtain the advice of an outside lawyer. I participated in two meetings with our hired outside attorney, Mr. Coons. One meeting was with Commissioner McCurdy and Commissioner Clapper. And the other one was with Commissioner Hadeen and Commissioner Walker. We have been schooled and schooled and schooled on this issue. At some point, we must start being good stewards of the Grand County citizens' taxes and the Grand County staff's time. This, this is a huge draw on both. We already have poor track, track record when it comes to conditional use permits. In March, we did not approve the C U P for Escape Adventures on Easy Street. The applicant appealed the commission's decision and our decision was overturned. The neighbors who opposed the C U P were represented at that hearing by our former county attorney, Christine Slump. The neighbors lost that case. Christina lost that case. We have now heard from two outside attorneys, Mr. Shaw, Deputy District Attorney in Salt Lake County Attorney's Office, and Mr. Coons, hired by our county attorney, as well as our own county attorney, Steve Stocks. Although the King Creek project is extremely controversial and many are opposed to it, I am unwilling to vote against our professional staff and our county attorney. The financial cost of making a poor decision, which will end in litigation, will force financial hardship on the property owners that would crush many of them. I will not gamble the house on the county's financial future and then turn around and ask the people of Grand County to pay for a colossal mistake. That's my thoughts and comments.
Uh, Kevin?
Um, I, I was confused by one, one, well, maybe not confused, but I understood our staff, you know, the planning staff on, on this question of conformance with the general plan to say that it didn't conform. I, I agree with that. I mean, you know, we can disagree with that assessment if we want to. And I, I think it is, you know, this isn't a referendum on the whole project, you know, even if we thought the project was great for the county. Um, you know, we're not supposed, supposed to approve utilities if they're not consistent with the general plan. So we either need to argue, well, it is consistent with the, does conform the general plan. I don't know how to make a convincing argument that way. Or we could change the general plan or, or we could do the planning. You know, there's lots of pathways to approve it, but until that happens, I, I think it is a fairly simple question of conformance with the general plan. And I, you know, we have, I think you're right, you know, we've heard a lot of different opinions about that of people saying clearly it does and clearly it doesn't, or there's ambiguity, you know, of various shades. I've tried to study all that as, as closely as, as I can. And I think the arguments that for nonconformance, like the ones made in this, our staff report, are a lot more convincing than the ones saying that there's, it does actually conform or there's enough ambiguity, ambiguity that we would have to do that. I, I find those arguments, and this includes the ones that Mr. Barrett made, pretty strained. And I think the arguments in favor of nonconformance are incredibly straightforward, just reading the plain text up there. So that's why I, you know, I, I cannot in good faith say that I think this conforms with our general plan.
I think early on in this process, we were told to rely on our experts who are our staff and, and I'd agree with Kevin's assessment of the, of the staff findings. And, uh, that's what, uh, I have to go on. And I think that's what I'll be going on. Anybody else have comment?
Yes, I have. By three, it does not conform with our general plan. It's very clear in our general plan that LUDMA should not be in this area.
And unless we have some planning to permit them in there.
It's planned, and that has not happened. We have not done that type of strategic planning for development of utilities in areas outside the urban district.
All right, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. Then there's a motion on the table from Commissioner Walker to deny with findings. Uh, second from Commissioner Hadeen. Um, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And all opposed to the motion. Uh, the motion passes five to two with Commissioners Winfield and McCurdy in opposition. Great. We'll move on to our next item, and that is agenda item two, independent contractor agreement with C Z B, uh, LLC for twenty thirty, general plan, land use chapter update. And this one goes back to Lisa.
This is just really quick. Um, so you all are familiar, have been working for a while now to get uh, consultants on board to help us out with the future land use plan. And basically it's the, it, it is the comprehensive update to the land use chapter of the general plan, which we've been talking about a lot. Um, so this has been going on for, you know, close to two years and we've just been working in-house. Um, and it's been a struggle just really dedicating enough time. We, we have these little spurts of progress and then nothing will happen because we just don't have the resources and the time for staff, um, to focus on it. So, um, I was able to get the sixty thousand dollars in my budget approved, um, in the twenty, for the twenty twenty four fiscal year budget. And, um, we went through our RFP process and we had three proposals submitted. Um, we had, they were all stellar proposals. It was a very tough decision, decision. Um, we had a little selection committee formed and we ended up having two of the proposals tie in the scoring. So we did, we did some interviews with the consultants and we narrowed it down to the one C Z B. They, they're going to be great. Um, we're really excited to start working with them and, um, get this future land use plan wrapped up. So that's what you're approving tonight.
Uh, Mary?
I move to approve the independent contract agreement with C Z B LLC to complete the update to the general plan, land use chapter. It's within budget.
Thank you. Uh, the motion on the table from Commissioner McGann and a second from Commissioner Clapper.
I just, uh, I'm thankful that we were able to find such, uh, quality applicants that it was a hard decision to make. And so thanks for investing your time and finding these guys. I also would like to mention that, um, you know, there's been talk about, uh, increasing uh, staff. And I think that I like the idea of going with a, a contractor who can focus on one mission, get it done. And I think in the long run, we're actually saving money than increasing internal staff. So, I look forward to getting this going. Thanks for all your work on this.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Uh, Mike?
Uh, in your interviews and looking at what, what, what was the defining thing that said C Z B above?
Um, I think one of the things I remember was they talked a lot about this concept of place making. And what we're trying to do with this land use chapter and future land use plan is really um, focus on what the new land use concepts are and how they actually will look on the ground in the different commercial, like emerging nodes that we've identified um, throughout Spanish Valley. And, um, and I think that they have like the certain expertise to kind of, um, convey what those concepts will look like on the ground. And, and really help us develop what the future land uses, um, will, how they can, we could translate those into the updates in the land use code as well, um, to create the development standards that will reflect just better could, like, community development and, and the built form on the ground in terms of like supporting pedestrian friendly development, um, creating places that people, that the community can really, um, have to, to grow and have commercial uses that are servicing the community and focusing kind of on that more than, you know, and having the balance between the tourism economy and like the local services that we need. So there's like, that's all kind of part of the package.
Although with that, uh, where, where have they worked somewhere?
They have, they have a lot of, that's the other thing. They have a lot of experience in Utah, working in, um, Heber City, uh, Park City. They've had some experience, but one of the partners was actually the planning director in Park City for a while. So they kind of learned a lot of lessons through that experience. And, um, so I think they have a lot to contribute in terms of understanding. They know Moab very well. They've, they've visited here a lot and kind of understand the lay of the land. So that was also unique.
Good.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thanks, Lisa. Anyone else have a question or concern about this or a comment? I'll call for a vote. Let's see, the motion was made by, uh, Commissioner McGann and seconded by Commissioner Clapper, uh, to approve. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. Uh, thanks, Lisa. Uh, on to agenda item three, ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance six, seven, five in chapter eight point one six of the Grand County General Ordinances and adopt new chapter eight point one six concerning special events. And this is Mallory.
I'm smiling because I just realized that we are just past the one year threshold for changing this ordinance. So it's exciting. Uh, the changes that are in the proposed ordinance are things that we've discussed before. Uh, so hopefully nothing is too much of a surprise, but kind of clarifying for uh, O S T A or other events that would be the exception section. Uh, also it's creating a pre-authorized list for events that would come before it all. That would set a number of different variables components for events so that it is just another way to not create legacy events, but to kind of make it, make it easier for those reoccurring community type events to move forward. And then one other change that was in there was just a clarification on the vendor section for giving permit in the vendor list and then having to have a business license or temporary business license that changed types to legislation last year. So if they have a permit of business license anywhere else in Utah, uh, we have to accept that. However, if it's a vendor and they are from, say, Colorado, they would need to get a temporary business license. So that is all that I have.
Thanks, Mallory. Um, yeah, I appreciate the effort. I think that, uh, I'm in favor of, uh, uh, kind of fast tracking, uh, these cherished legacy events. And just to select a few, it looks like our next, uh, agenda item concerns those specific events and they all look pretty, uh, pretty above board. So, anything that helps simplify the process for, for these kind of things is, seems, Evan?
I'd move to repeal chapter eight point one six, special events of the Grand County General Ordinances and related ordinance number six, seven, five, and adopt new chapter eight point one six, special events as set forth in the attached ordinance and its exhibit date.
Thank you. Bill, a second. Uh, motion on the table from Commissioner Clapper and a second from Commissioner Winfield, um, to approve. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously with Commissioner Hadeen absent. Um, on to agenda item four, creation of a preliminary preauthorization li- list, list for special events. Uh, Kate Finley, our special events program manager.
So let me share my screen. We'll look at that list. So when we discussed the creation of this list back in March, some of the things that we talked about in terms of criteria, where is it a recurring event? Is it an event that's in good standing with the county? It's complying with everything the best? Is it a local sponsor? And can it be considered educational, cultural, community, family, or historical? So what you've got on the list, the first four tick all of those boxes. So the Easter Jeep Safari and Labor Day Campout Events, the Moab Music Festival, and the Canyonlands Half Marathon. In terms of giving you all options, the next four tick almost all of those boxes. Um, so you can kind of see how it's laid out, but the, the other four, so Outer Bike, it's a local sponsor, it's recurring. It's an event that's in good standing. The Fallon Peace Officer Trail Ride, um, the Utah Peace Officer Association is not a local organization. However, we do have some local folks who are very heavily involved in organizing that event. Um, Moab Trail Marathon, another recurring event, local sponsor. And then the Red Canyon Pow Wow is not a local sponsor, but is a cultural community. And I realized I didn't have the years, like how long they've been recurring, but if that's useful information, I can run through that for each of these events as well.
Oh. And if any of these events were to change a location, how would that affect their, uh, pre-approving?
So I think when we talked about it in March, if there is significant change, like the event had a different organizer or they had negative feedback, then I would bring that information back.
So maybe if you all approve this back, put together some, what are our information from that exists? For office lists, writing from these changes, this happens.
Be subject to reconsideration.
Right. Uh, Bill's?
I move to approve the preauthorization list for twenty twenty four.
Thank you. All right, uh, I have a motion from Commissioner Winfield and a second from Commissioner Hadeen to approve.
Yes, um, so I, I just, this is maybe following on the previous comment. Um, if, if something were to change, you know, either the, either management of the event changes or the nature of the event changes, do we need, we, we can just, you know, take them off this pre-approved list anytime we want to in, in future years? Or do we need to provide for that in the ordinance?
Uh, so I believe how it's set up, it's been a few weeks since we talked about this, right? It's, uh, it's for that year.
Okay, so we, we confirm it annually, we confirm, so?
Yes, I think we put it in there for twice a year. Uh, you guys will look at this list.
Okay.
We're talking about, okay, but music festival, you guys can just have this every year without question. I, I imagine it would come back, but we're, they won't be told that this is a blanket for
Good.
This.
Anyone else?
Uh, I, I am a little, uh, I kind of lean in a little more towards like a shortlist. You know, so that there's not the potential like backpedaling with, uh, with events. So I know, like, like you said, the first four kind of seemed like no brainers to me. And then, um, I was kind of scratching my head about some of the lower four. So I don't know if like the, how other folks feel, if it'd be easier to start with a shortlist and see how it works and then add people to it or start big and then possibly whittle it down later. I don't know which is gonna create more work in the long run.
But this, to me, this seems like a pretty short list. I don't know the percentage it, it is of, of the overall events. Um, and personally, I think I'm, I'm good with all those events. I'm familiar with every single one of them. I've actually, I think I've attended every single one of them, except perhaps the Fallon Peace Officer Ride. But I know the, I know, I know Brody actually pretty well. And, uh, I'm personally good with, good with, with, good with all those.
Yeah, I, I think that this comment makes sense, but I, I could go either way, but either Mike.
Not to be the counterpart here, but I wanted to add things to the list because I thought it was too short. So, uh, I mean, I, I'm grateful hearing people here this definitely again, uh, more than once a year. I have, I mean, so, uh, but I'd like to look at future, uh, adding events who have been around for a while. I don't know what's here.
Any other comment on this? All right, I have a motion. I think Bill made the motion and Trish seconded it, um, to approve all of these events. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And all opposed.
I like the shortlist.
All right. So the motion passes six to one with Commissioner Clapper in opposition.
Exactly. Just to make sure it's clear, I think you decided that all the events are approved. Means they're all approved for this list.
Wait, and they still have to be? Yes, I'm sorry. Thanks for the clarification and, and I did understand that, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, it is after six o'clock, so we will now, uh, entertain another citizens to be heard session. I know some of you on Zoom or in the chambers may be here to comment on the C U P. And you may do so in the C O P hearing for the Kane Springs, um, district. And you may do so, but I just wanted, in case you hadn't seen earlier, that, that, uh, has been addressed and it was, um, it was not approved earlier, but you may make any comment you like. Uh, you'll be given three minutes for comment. And I would go to the chambers. Is there anyone here who is here to make, uh, any public comment? Anyone on Zoom who is tuning in right now who would like to make public comment, who hasn't previously made comment? Okay. All right, last call on Zoom. You can, uh, just unmute and start talking if you were here to make comment. And last call in the chambers. Anyone here for a comment? Okay, um, we'll move on to agenda item five, National Ge, uh, National Geographic Traveler, nationalgeographic.com, twenty twenty four, uh, dash zero six, I D one, one, zero, four, six, marketing proposal. And I'll welcome Sky, wait, hi, Sky.
Thank you. Um, I am here on behalf of the department and Ben, specifically this is a project he's been working on and he's unable to appear today. But we are seeking your approval to move forward with this National Geographic proposal for fourteen thousand and seventeen dollars as presented. Um, this is the preferred vendor for this project and the preferred proposal. The goal really is outreach in the UK. Uh, this, this, uh, package, this digital content package with National Geographic Traveler will be specific to the UK audience. Um, and it will include, um, branded, uh, digital content, a social media campaign associated with it, online banners, a newsletter spotlight. And, uh, we'll have the opportunity, um, to pivot. So if we find that it is a really successful campaign and it's something that we, we want to actually pivot, we can actually um, boost and then seek other, uh, destinations like Germany or other international.
Great. Thanks, Guy.
And this is within budget?
It is within the budget. Repeat media.
Evan?
I would approve the National Geographic Traveler, nationalgeographic.com, twenty twenty four through oh, six dash I D one, one, zero, four, six proposal for fourteen thousand dollars, seventeen cents as presented.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Clapper and a second from Commissioner Hadeen.
Um, and I think you meant to say fourteen thousand and seventeen dollars. No sense.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Did you get any pictures of Chair Hadler and Lykra at the creek ride?
I don't think you want those pictures.
Can we use those in the campaign?
Yeah. Probably ample opportunity to take them, but. I'm, I'm excited about this. I've, I've been a, I grew up with National Geographic. My grandparents had just stacks of them when I was a kid. And I've always absolutely loved National Geographic. I think it's, I think it's cool. So, um, I think it's neat to, to go with those. And I know how, how ubiquitous they are, really. I mean, yeah, they're everywhere. I think it's, I think it's a cool movement.
And I think there's always an opportunity to, because Moab is just so. And I think there's always an opportunity to, because Moab is just so epic that, you know, getting in and starting a conversation with a lot of these different applications, I think will just evolve more coverage that we're actually making.
All right, any other comment? Call for a vote on the motion. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, I think you're up next, Guy, too, so you might want to just, uh, hang out. Yeah. Agenda item six is the Star Grant First Contract Amendments. And this is, uh, this is our county attorney, Stephen Stocks, as well as, uh, Sky White, the assistant director.
So on these guy grant, uh, applications, we just had to make some adjustments to them based on some of the things that they were going on. Some of them need extensions. I can go through any of them specifically i- if you'd like to go through them. Some need more time to spend the funds, others changed slightly what they were doing. Uh, for example, Hidden Cuisine LLC, they originally were approved for a, uh, for the grant, but the idea was that they would have six sites, but they're not able to put six sites in and they can only put five. So staff, myself, I can't just make the adjustment to a contract that says, oh yeah, six is good enough. We've prepared them as amendments for the commission. If the commission didn't want to do that, they theoretically say, no, we want six, uh, and have that discussion. But for the most part, many of these grants are just, uh, extending out the time for them to comply with the period of time to spend the funds, uh, and, and other changes. We do have some that didn't make it on this agenda and my office will, uh, follow up with those and get those added to the next round. But if there are any particular questions regarding them, uh, like I said, the majority of them are just extending out the period of time for them to spend the funds.
Great. So you mentioned time extension and five sites instead of six. Is that about everything?
Yep, that's, uh, I'm just thumbing through the contracts right now. Uh, but all of them needed just a little bit more time. Yeah, every single one of them is an extension with, uh, uh, it was able to have an extension and a reduction in sites. There were other ones that were closer, like C. Kaven is a good example. We discussed in the meeting, they wanted to expand their area that they had. They ended up buying the property adjacent originally when they came to the commission. Uh, they said, hey, look, we want to expand, we want to do renovations. Well, and so when we met with Commissioner Hadler and Commissioner Winfield, we said, well, that's theoretically expansion, is purchasing the building next to it. And so that was just approved without having to come back to the commission. But some of these other changes where they need more time, theoretically, the commission put their foot down and say, no, we don't want you to have more time. Or you could say, yes, we, we want to give you more time. So we're just bringing you back to, to the commission because you guys have decided on you. These things, so that's, that's really all of them are extensions and that Hidden Cuisine is, uh, one site less.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation.
And, and the reason for the one side less is that's what's permitted. They're capped out on the company that they can put in.
Evan?
I move to approve the first amendment to c- contracts extending and modifying the terms for the following recipients, Grounded Healing, Heron School, Hidden Cuisine, Science Moab, Sherry Griffiths Expeditions, Westside Wereworks, and Wild Ravens.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. All right, I have a motion on the table to approve from Commissioner Walker and a second from Commissioner Winfield. And I read through all these, I've been part of this from the beginning and I, I find all of their, uh, reasons to ask for extensions reasonable.
Should we expect, uh, future or other contracts to come back in the future?
Okay, a few more. I know ABC Thompson, uh, needed a little bit more time. I think theirs comes up in June. And so I think we're going to have it on our next meeting. Reason why is we don't want to go beyond the time of the contract dependence because technically at that point you're not amending a contractor in case you're going to do a contract. Uh, so there are other ones that need addressed. I think the other one was marital, uh, marriage.
The intimate weddings.
Thank you, intimate weddings. Uh, I knew marriage was involved somewhat. Uh, so intimate weddings, uh, that one needs to come back to make some adjustments, but all of them are very minor. Uh, and so that's, we'll just bring it back to you if you have questions. Commissioner, like I said, Commissioner Hadler, which you'll sat through part of our full review of them. So the goal is to continue to allow them to utilize the funds because otherwise they drop back into the.
Yeah, yes. Thank you. Um, any other questions for, uh, Stephen or Scott, Bill?
I guess the question is, will this allow some of these to move forward? I know there's been some discussions, especially around Hidden Cuisine. She reached out to myself and then I reached out to the commission, but she's looking for, I think, some finalization on this.
Yeah, and then this should be able to finalize the remaining terms.
Great.
And, and I will say staff, staff has been working really hard to address these things, um, with the applicants. I know this is, it is a frustrating process and, and for some, because it's a new process. We're getting evidence from them and they're having to greenlight it. And, and we understand how it can be difficult, but some of these awards are sizable awards where you're getting sixty thousand dollars and so put up with a, a little bit of red tape. I think that's unfortunately to be expected. And so we understand that, we appreciate their willingness to work with us and their willingness to go through and, uh, provide us the documents. And if we, if we do something like this again, this has been a good learning experience. We'll know what things to ask for in the future and how to structure it slightly differently.
Thanks. All right, anyone else? I'll call for a vote. Uh, I think Kevin made the motion, Bill seconded it. Um, yeah, Trish.
Oh, uh, I was saying.
Oh.
I've been right now.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? And that passes unanimously.
Like one of those old cats.
Thank you, Stephen. Um, uh, next agenda item is number seven, Children's Justice Center, CJC Vehicle Purchase. And this is Attorney Stocks as well as Andrea Noyes, Director of CJC.
I saw you come there. I was like, congratulations. That's awesome. Yay. Um, my name's Andrea Noyes. I'll introduce myself. I know most of you guys know me, but for the public that doesn't, I'm the executive director of the Children's Justice Center. Um, the reason I wanted to come before you today was, um, there's a lot of travel involved with the CJC. I'm on call. I'm a one woman show. Right now I'm covering, um, both Grand and San Juan County. I travel up north to the AG's office. I sit on the sexual assault committee and travel down to the reservation. Um, and there's times where we're on call, we have kiddos come in at eleven o'clock at night and they're in a precarious situation where their caregiver might be also perpetrator. So, um, they can't transport the kids to the CJC, so vehicles very necessary for the CJC. Um, right now I'm driving at the FJ Cruiser that was, um, seized in a drug seizure. And so it's got its check engine lights on. Um, I busted the key that actually turns on the, um, that opens the door. So we're like having to jimmy it open. But the biggest thing is it's su- it's a big, big, um, cost on gas. And so I was trying to creatively come up with an idea to purchase a vehicle for the CJC. Um, because I didn't want to utilize funds that could be best spent on things like therapy for the kiddos or things that we could use. Um, for the CJC, we're duly funded position where the state funds us through the AG's office and then the county sub, um, funds that as well for my position. Uh, last year we had some rollover funds for, from the AG's office that was given to us additionally. And then they extended my contract to cover San Juan longer than they had originally told me that I was going to be covering. I agreed to do that, but that also came with additional funds for the state. Um, so what I would be asking is to use those additional funds that the state gave me, um, gave the CJC to cover my grand county's portion of my salary and my benefits. So use the state's money to cover that and then use the county's money that they cover my, that the county kicks in for my benefits to purchase the county car. And so it wouldn't change our bottom line. And in fact, I'm actually under budget. One thing I would do is we were looking for electric vehicles because right now, um, I'm using five thousand dollars in gas money a year for all my travels. So I wanted to maybe use less of that by purchasing an electric vehicle and then use that money in the future use for things like therapy for our kiddos. So that's my ask to just move our funds.
Did you have anything to add, Stu?
No, I, I know, um, the funds that we, we received, this is, the request that she's making is within budget based on the funds that are coming in through the state. It wasn't anticipated that we were going to have the continued funds from San Juan County. And because they needed additional help, uh, they provided that additional funds. So really it's a windfall and I don't know what else the CJC could utilize the funds on in a short period of time, and I don't believe they're going to roll over. And so it's taking advantage of a need that we have. Uh, the, the other thing that's, uh, been really helpful and I, and I don't know, I don't believe Andrea mentioned it. Um, she's providing support and help and some of those, some of those responses, she may have to drive down to the reservation, uh, and, and respond to some of the calls because of the coverage that we're providing for San Juan County. They have a new director, Robert Nieman, who is, uh, who was, worked previously as supervisor for DCFS. He's down there, he's newer in the role. We're still, uh, trying to be a good neighbor and provide additional support and help. So at times he may have to go to a training, they're going to lean on us. Uh, it may have her try to pick up a county car in the middle of the night or have, um, have her have to utilize her own personal vehicle. And if we have it with the county vehicle, it's set up for that purpose. It's used for that purpose. It's, it's a cleaner approach to do it that way. So we have the funds, the possibility of use. And, and so I think it's overall, uh, a really good thing that, uh, that could help our office.
Gabe? Yeah, if I could add, uh, Director Noyes did a great job communicating with me, with me and my office, um, regarding this purchase ahead of time. And I've checked out that we're, uh, conforming and complying with our purchasing policy. And, uh, fleet manager Cody McKinney did a, you know, did a lot of leg, legwork and, and helping to secure this vehicle for the CJC. So I wanted to give a shout out to him. Um, and also he, he explained to me that he did, um, first look to see how, uh, an acquisition of vehicle might be within our enterprise fleet, uh, lease, uh, program. And, and it turned out that this was the, this sort of an outright purchase, um, was, 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 um, what was going to keep us, uh, within budget. And, um, and so actually the recommendation and I saw, and Cody shared the email communications with me with the enter- enterprise fleet manager, that their, their recommendation was for us to pursue the, the option here. That's before you.
Thank you. Great, Bill?
Yeah, I move to approve the purchase of a vehicle through Childproof Justice Center.
Thanks. All right, uh, motion approved from Commissioner Winfield and a second from Commissioner Hadeen. Any further comment?
I have.
Go ahead, Bill.
Only comment I would caution is if you're driving down there in the wintertime in an all-electric vehicle, there's still some concerns. I know that we do not have the technology yet for a hundred percent assurance there. And also onto the reservation, whether or not there's charging stations to get you home. So it's a hybrid an option or this is just me personally, I wouldn't want to be stranded, but.
Yeah, so we did, we did meet with Cody and map out what the reservation looked like and the charging stations to make sure that that was an option.
Great.
I know that was going to be my comment and yeah, I just appreciate the due diligence that you guys went through. At first I was like, I saw that, but I was like, sticker shocked, but then it was like, it was great to know that you guys went through all that.
And would this, would this potentially be the first, uh, electric vehicle that the county, uh?
Could go green, I guess. I think so.
That'd be great.
Has, have you already found, uh, individual vehicle?
Yeah.
In, in, in fact, Cody emailed us about going to pick it up if, if it was approved.
Uh, that might've been useful on, uh, agenda summary to see like what we're getting for the money.
Yeah, so actually we, we went through an entire list. Um, there, there were, I think, eleven different electric vehicles that we went through to see what would best suit our needs, make sure it's all wheel drive, um, and come within our budget. We picked out the Mustang Mach-E and it's, um, it was like the lowest price vehicle that was still an all-wheel drive.
That sounds, that sounds fun. Gabe?
Yeah, sorry, we do have a close form prepared. Um, and sorry, I didn't share that with you all. If you're interested in seeing the, all of the quotes that were considered, I'd be happy to share that with you all. In fact, I will, since it came out.
Great. All right, uh, motion to approve on the table from Commissioner, uh, Winfield and a second from Commissioner Hadeen. A call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And all opposed.
I just would have liked to see.
He, he actually wants to piggyback. He wants somebody else to do the research is what it comes down to.
Oh, it's.
All right. Thank you. The motion, the motion passes six to one with Commissioner Clapper in opposition. Uh, agenda item eight, ordinance establishing the public land corner preservation fund. Uh, this one, uh, has Commissioner Winfield as well as our, uh, Commission Associate Administrator, McCall as the presenters. Did you want to? Yeah. It, it is interesting for sure. So this came before the commission, Lucas Blake did a whole presentation in twenty nineteen, in early twenty nineteen, and the chair at the time decided to not suspend the rules and vote on it that night because of the public hearing. Anyway, it was me. A little wrong for, and it died in ignominious death at that point. It never came back before the commission. So, so we're picking it up five years later. Picking it up five years later. Top of the common period. And Commissioner Winfield probably has more information on that, ins and outs, but this is preservative core markers. And any, there, there is, I guess I have a question too that we need to sort out the. I talked to John Cortez, our reporter, and he remembers it. And he said, that's what the surveyor's fee on the fee schedule is for. I don't really like any fees for this ever, so we're going to have to sort that out internally. You know, it is on a fee schedule as a surveyor fee for twenty dollars. John Cortez has memories that that's what this was for, was when we didn't pass this ordinance. We still haven't made that fee, so. Okay. Well, thanks for that background, Quinn. Now, uh, Hill, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm interested. Where did it come from? Like, how did it go here in the?
It came at the UAC convention in St. George that Gabe and I were out. I think we were the only two there, no maps and stuff. They're also, but it was presented to me, there's money available. I believe it's around six hundred thousand dollars, not specifically for Grand County, but statewide. And they were hoping that Grand County would participate. And so I brought it back, ran up the flagpole with chalk. Um, it was the order from Lee Douchaine County that brought it to my attention. And I did some research. We've had an email chain between Lucas and gentleman that sits on the floor that gives the money out. And so that deadline is actually the tenth. And he has said that if Lucas and team need a little bit more time, he's willing to work on that. He has, we were made aware of it at such a late notice. And so it's just money to bring back and I know that sometimes I have to try and justify my travel budget to certain commissioners, so I can hear, we can vote.
I'm glad you brought up the fact that, um, Lucas, we're working on it. Yeah, that would, that would make you very happy to know.
Yeah, he is working on it. He thought it should be done by Friday.
Okay, great. Awesome. Thank you. Um, all right, anyone care to make a motion on this one? Thanks, Bill.
I move to approve the ordinance establishing public plant corner preservation.
Great. Mike seconding. Um, motion on the table made by Commissioner Winfield, second from Commissioner McCurdy. Uh, any further questions or discussion on this?
Uh, kind of unrelated, but, um, it might be uh, advantageous for us to not drop, um, surveyor work between the cracks. Maybe we heard from him once a year or something. Maybe we could get that on a future agenda just to get an update on what's his office is working on and stuff, but.
I will, we did exchange messages on this item, so I have been, I have been contacting you, but you're right.
I know, but it's nice to see folks in the chambers and hear what the different.
I'm, I'm happy to extend an invite.
Uh, other elected officials present quite regularly. So I think this is, uh, I remember the, the presentation. I think it's important work and I think that it will, uh, modernize a lot of what, um, we're working on, so.
Great. Bill?
Yeah, I would add also that he is trying to see if this will fit in on the Thompson Springs repla. Create and utilize some of this money out there, which is another project we're working on. So it's, I don't know.
Okay. All right, um, I have a motion on the table to approve. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands and that passes unanimously. Uh, all right, we are finished with our regular, uh, action item agenda. We're down to our consent agenda, which today, uh, insists of actually.
We're all in shock. All of us are in shock.
What's that? Um, the commission, uh, content agenda tonight consists of approval of meeting minutes for April sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, ratification of payment of bills, total bills in the amount of eight hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-two cents, total payroll in the amount of four hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-eight. Total payroll in the amount of four hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents for a grand total bills and payroll in the amount of, uh, one million, two hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars and ten cents. Uh, consent agenda item C, ratification of the emergency purchase, the evaporative cooler for the kitchen intake at the Grand Center. Uh, item D, ratification of the UDOT federal air agreement for local agency project. Agenda item E, ratification of the independent contractor agreement with Arch Walker for an emergency replacement repair of the North Bay roll-up door at the old Spanish Trail Arena, Sosta. Item F, modification to the cooperative law enforcement agreement for the Mantilla Sal National Forest. Item G, update to the Grand County Southeast Utah Health Department memorandum of understanding for the health materials coordinator position. Uh, H, updating the succession plan for the emergency manager and chief account officer, or chief executive officer. Item I, Grand County twenty twenty four, Fourth of July fireworks display, independent contractor agreement. Item J, extension of time for Redtail Air to begin construction of their new FBO building. And lastly, item K, sales tax data request to the Utah State Tax Commission. It's mouthful. Uh, Mike? Okay.
I want you to accept the gen- uh, consent agenda as written.
Thank you. Does that second Mike? Great. All right, um, motion to approve. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Yep.
It's just so early. I was, uh, could I pull the fireworks off so we can discuss that?
Uh, okay. Then, um. All right, we'll pull that off and address that after this, uh.
I will amend my motion to not include the fireworks.
Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, except for that is agenda item I. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. Uh, agenda item I, uh, Grand County twenty twenty four, Fourth of July fireworks display, independent contractor agreement. And is there a presenter?
Uh.
Go ahead, Evan.
Uh, there's not a presenter listed. Uh, it's got the administrator. Uh, I did, remind me that this is funded through discretionary or this is through?
We put this in the budget and the city gives us eleven thousand as well.
That's what I was.
And the REC Special Service District gives us money for it as well.
So this is our share or this is all that combined?
This is.
They, yeah. Yeah, it's, the, the contract is selfless for twenty-seven thousand dollars. We pay all twenty-seven to the city and the REC for the embers in the county.
Okay. I, and ours comes from, our portion comes from?
Budgeted line for fireworks.
I mean, is that, uh, property tax or is that, uh, do you remember?
General.
That's what I meant, general fund versus, uh. Sorry, I, it's, I know I get into a conversation about this every year. People are always like, how much are we spending a teacher's salary for this? And it looks like it's less. So I appreciate that.
That's a lot. It's the exact same as last year.
Oh, is it? Yes.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say it's from TRCC, the Restaurant Car Tax.
Yeah, I, I think you're right.
And I, I think I would have said general fund, but now that Gabe says that, TRCC, sorry. And I have wished, uh, Lions Back is on the board. Let us do it off there again. That's where they're gonna be.
Do they own that property where they launch? Yeah. Lions Back Resort.
Bill?
Wait to see what the vote is.
All right, um, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Winfield, in fact, second from Commissioner Walker. Any, uh, last comments before I call for a vote? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously.
Uh, yeah, my children's justice are any children's fireworks.
Yeah, uh, order for, just a sec. Mike, Mike's got the floor for a second. I'm sorry. Uh, consideration with that, uh, also would be the idea of posting the fireworks at those. At. Fighting for.
I would like for a future consideration to, is, you know, we always pass that ordinance that says we want people to be respectful and responsible. Let's do it next week. Rather than buying any double dark thirty feet into the paper.
All right, um, we've reached the end of our regular commission meeting. It's, uh, the very early hour of six thirty-three.